674, so it's down a little bit there. But if you go back three, four, or five years, it's 624,000, 638,000, 619,000. So it almost seems as the workforce in Erie, at least, you know, based on a dollar per work of everybody that's working, we're back to where we were three, four, or five years ago. So that, I think that's, you know, those some optimism for what's going on. Move it down, sorry. And then the earned income tax collections, also the same thing. This year, for the first four months of the year, our EIT collections have been $2,200,000. And last year and the year before, kind of tough because we had the adjustments to what those tax rates were. But if you go back three, four, five years, 200, or 2,200,000, 2,168,000, 2,196,000. So along those lines, it looks as though the income tax collections or, you know, what people are making, looks as though people are getting a little bit of, you know, uptick in salary increases. So the EIT collections are on pace where we thought they would be. And then again, when the full book comes out, you'll see all those things line by line, line by line. And moving down, you know, bouncing back to, I put out the verbal narrative on all of the, on the summary. You'll notice that the building permits, the permit line, line C licenses and permits, are a little bit ahead budgetarily from where we had, from where we had budgeted, but also a couple hundred thousand dollars ahead of where we were last year. I know the month of April, we were totally shut down with all that stuff because there was no building during, during the first six weeks of the COVID pandemic. But, you know, it looks as though the building's starting to bounce back and things are going well there. Otherwise, line by line, looking down, your franchise fees, grants, pilots, a lot of the pilot people are paying earlier this year compared to last year. Service fees, a little ahead. So revenues seem to be doing pretty good this year.
Paul, 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 before you go to finish revenue, I have a question.
That the salaries in, yes, um.
Liz wants you.
Oh, I can't.
You're not here?
I can't hear.
Kathy, can you ask my question? My question is.
What'd she say?
My question is that in your highlighted statement, you didn't have.
No, it's not my highlighter. Those are the numbers.
All right. The numbers, you didn't have anything in here about amusement tax. And I just wondered, you know, we've been tracking that. I know that you budgeted lower, but how are we doing on amusement tax? Are we hitting the number?
Amusement taxes are pretty low. We've collected about $25,000 this year, which is, you know, we budgeted about $100,000. So, but in past years, we'd always collected a quarter of a million. So amusement taxes, just comparatively speaking, pretty low.
Okay.
Yeah, that, well, downtown's opening up a little bit. People are down here, so, yeah. Okay.
Paul, I was wondering if you could talk to us about what you had just mentioned, about the money coming, coming in and how you know.
Oh, the, the, the new stimulus money. We're, we're on, we're, we're supposed to get about $79 million. The mayor and I talked about it last week or so. And the last communication he got, we're supposed to get that money sometime in the middle of May. And the question was asked before I got on the Zoom at least, there's been no definitive regulations passed out as to what we can do with that money. So I think that's, Kathy, that's the biggest question. Yeah, there's no, nothing definitive. We've sat in on at least once a week, Zoom meeting with various organizations, the League of Cities, the mayor's conference had one a couple of weeks ago. And everybody has ideas on what they think is going to be able to happen. And they're probably, you know, on pace with what we're going to be allowed to spend the money on. But there's nothing been definitive. So for me to say absolutely for sure, we can spend the money on this, is, at this moment in time, is just guessing. So.
So we're going to spend a million seven just guessing? And including our capital fund for security to go off? If we can't use that corporate money?
Well, that money is in the reserves for the, for the cap, in the Capital Bank account, yes.
So you plead that if we can't use all the money for security?
If, if that's the way the rules are written, yes. And, yeah, there would, there'd be not much money left in the Capital Bank account if we're not allowed to use it for replenishing that fund. Now, I will say though, there are, some of the rules we've read, we're going to be able, I, I think, and again, I don't want to say this because it may not come to pass, but they're looking as though we're going to be able to replenish revenues that were lost last year. And we were probably about $4 million short, not a buy, you know, give or take $4.2 million short in some of the revenues we didn't collect that were directly related to COVID. And then we were about a million and a half dollars short in the sewer fund also. So we should be on pace to get over $5 million of replenishing out of that money. Again, that's the way the, everything's been coming out preliminarily, but I can't promise that that's when the final definitive rules or regulations come out. But yet, to answer your question, yes. Okay, yes.
Can you tell us why we are behind in budgeted amount for investment income?
Right, right now, because investment income is basically correlated to real estate tax collections. The more money we get in real estate tax collections, the more money we have in our checking account. So when, when there's more money in the checking account, we collect more interest. So once that money comes in, you know, this week, next week, we'll have the, the most balances in our bank accounts and we'll collect the most interest there.
And we closed on the payment of the debt?
We sent the money to the Bank of New York yesterday afternoon. The mayor, the controller, and the city clerk will be signing all the paperwork about 10:30, 11 o'clock this morning, whenever Tim Center from Knox Law Firm gets over here. And at that point in time, yes, it will all be done.
Do you have any projections for this month?
Kathy, that's, again, that's the hard one. With, with the treasurer's office being short staffed at this time, cash flows are very difficult to project where we're going to be weekly. But for the month, we're hoping that, you know, everyone pays their real estate taxes as they have in the past. So we should be on par with where we've been in the past.
Does anyone else have any questions for Paul?
Yes, that's what I do. Paul, back to the security and the amount for City Hall here. Eddie mentioned 1.7 mil. The only money we have in our capital reserve per se is like a million dollars, correct?
Correct.
The point seven will be in future budgets?
Yes.
That's what I want everyone to know.
Yeah, some of that is not able to be spent out of the Capital Bank account. Like, like the security people that are going to stand out front, the service, that's going to be a general fund operating expense. So the first year it's 50,000, 48,000 and change, and 100,000 each year after that, that will be, pardon me?
It's 118.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's going to be general fund operating expense because it's not a capital expenditure. It doesn't fall under the rules of what we're allowed to spend capital money on.
So with all of that being said, if we do, if that relief money, it would only cover the million dollars, it didn't cover the.
Again.
If, if.
Yes, yes, that's, yes. And we'll get the full bit, look, sorry, the book out by the end of the week. As soon as treasurer's office gets everything in and we can, you know, everybody take a look at it, we can sit down and talk about it.
You know, maybe if we table these two expenditures, people upstairs might get some answers from Don in Washington to see where that money's coming from. I'm going to stand in a way, sign one vote, but my vote will be negative on this because I still like the idea of unknown where the money's coming from.
I don't think we can do that because we're opening the City Hall on June 1st. So that is something that we really need to take. In fact, this is all something that is definitely needed. So I'm ready to keep us all safe June 1st.
I allow paid for it too. That's the only question I have.
I typed in the chat that President Biden is speaking to the nation tonight about the COVID relief package. So I expect that after he speaks tonight, you know, those rules and regs will be coming out from Treasury Department. So if you really want to know how that money can be spent, tune into the president tonight.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, my mind, I'm leaving. It's that in comparison, he's speaking, the county is already open. There are security measures that are necessary to open a building. And there are those that are not necessary to open a building. And we should not confuse, we should not pile them all together because they're not the same.
Teresa, do you have anything to report today? Thank you. Any more questions? I do want to reiterate how important it is to open up safely. I, as a councilperson, feel that everyone in our community needs to be safe walking in this building, employees and everybody. Thank you. That being said, we want all of our places in our community to be safe. I know we live in troubled times and the police are doing the best we can to keep us safe. And everyone should have a, a new outlook since there's so much turbulence in our world about keeping safe. Thank you.
If that's the finance, is there anything? We have eight minutes before the meeting starts. Anything for the goodie order as far as these gentlemen's concerned? Michael?
I just believe that there are, that there are parts of the security package that we need.
I could barely hear Michael.
Take your rib off, so I can hear you. There you go.
Am I leaving?
That's better than that.
Yeah. I was just saying that, I believe there's parts of the security package that are necessary to open up City Hall. And there are other parts that are not. And we should do our due diligence.
Just figure out exactly what we do need in order to open up this building safely.
And do that, approve that. And then as we move forward, we can work on the rest of it.
Renee, would you like to say something?
I was just going to add that, you know, historically, the way City Hall has been, anybody could enter at any time and go anywhere in the building. And not only is that a security risk for anybody who's working in the building, but it's also a security risk for anybody who's just coming in to do business in City Hall. Because if there is some sort of emergency, we don't know where anyone is in the building. We don't know who's in the building. We don't know where they are. If there's a fire or if there is an intruder, we have no way currently of knowing who's in and where they are. Under the new system, everybody will get their badge. All employees, all personnel, all elected officials will have their badge and will be able to be tracked. So we'll know where everyone is and all visitors. There will be about, I think it's 10 to 20 visitor badges, which will connect to the visitor management system. And so when somebody comes in and they check into the kiosk and they will have their, their card, then if there is an emergency situation, hopefully there, we will never have to deal with that. But if there is, we will know exactly where everyone is in the building. If somebody came in and left, we will be able to track all that. So nobody should, hopefully we would not have a tragedy. Right now, we have no ability to do that. And that's one of the, that's another one of the reasons why we think this is so important.
If I can make anything, I've never argued the point that security is important. My only argument is money. Nobody, everybody wants to be safe. Who's going to be looking at us when we start working on the figures? I'm just hoping that your Golden Globes are clear and we know what we're talking about. How about three security guards? Do they, are they going to rotate? Where the gun's going to be? There's so many things we don't know about the security system, I guess is another question. We're going to have two security people that can't carry a gun. And we're going to have one, can Paul ask the guy with the gun to be at the finance department? Or do we have to have the guy by the police department? You know, this question is that a lot of people have, and it's kind of a joke around town, three security guards and one with the gun. We're going to put three wallets down on the table and see which ones going to be where? I'm being a little facetious, but sometimes when we deal out of fear, we make fools of ourselves. That's all I'm saying.
I just want to make a point that, you know, that there are women who are security guards also. They aren't all guys. I don't know who's going to be hired here, but I've been down to wastewater, wastewater treatment plant has hired women security guards. It's, it's everywhere except right in front of you. Women do have a place in the world.
Renee, I had a question if I could. The, with any type of program like this, I'm sure after a year, as we go forward here, there'd be a simple evaluation to see how it's going and, and make sure it's working and so forth. Is that planned or, you may have already told us that in that prior meeting? Just a question, because with any system that's new, you know, there's going to be tweaks. There's going to be things that we may want to adjust and so forth.
Yes, and that's, that's built in. And there will be ongoing monitoring and assessment of how it's working. And if things, you know, if we don't need things, if things need to be, you know, changed, that will all be evaluated.
I have a question. So who's going to do the monitoring of this system? Understand the capabilities of what the system can do? Understand the capabilities of what the system can do? So who is being paid to monitor the system to? You've got the cameras. Would nobody watch it? It is. So, yeah, just, so that's my question. Who's going to operate the operational system?
Um.
I, I really couldn't hear what the question was. I don't know why.
Michael asked what, who's going to run the cameras? If we're going to have this system showing the entire City Hall, are we going to be hiring new people to monitor the cameras? Or how are we going to do that?
No, the costs are all built into the proposal. The costs are all, the costs are all built into the proposal. There, we're not going to be hiring anybody additional. So, I mean.
Who was going to do it?
Who's going to do it? That's the question.
I mean, I can check with AJ and Dave. I don't know if Paul knows that. I think that the, the, the security agency can monitor it at all times. And then I don't know who on point will be, you know, at City Hall monitoring it. But I can, I can try to get an answer on that.
Renee, didn't they mention that we, we already have a lot of security cameras, correct? I mean, that's, and I think that when the security consultants talked to us, they said, most of those didn't need to be upgraded. So they're already in place and being watched. I, I mean, I, I'm kind of just repeating what I thought I heard. I, I could be wrong, but thanks for, you know, checking further into that.
That's correct. They're just adding to fill in the blank spaces.
Then where are we allowed to turn from now?
Police Department? There is, there are several people throughout the building who can see the cameras that have clearance. I don't have a complete list.
And one more thing, didn't AJ or Dave, and I haven't gotten down there to do it, but I think that they did offer to walk us through the whole thing. So maybe we should try and all do that before June 1st. I, I know, I thought that was a, a good idea and a generous offer.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to rest this up because we, Michael said.
We can have less work. But what I do know, these facilities do not run themselves. And if we do not have a person or if we don't know if the contractors are going to be running the operational system at this juncture, that's a real problem.
Was that a question? Okay, I can't hear for some reason. I don't know if anybody else can hear.
If we don't know who's running the cameras and we don't know it at all times, that the security system would have a void, basically.
Right. Well, that would not be the case.
All right, two minute break and then we'll start our meeting. I'm sorry, Kathy, you can end your meeting.
Can you hear us? Listen.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, at 9:00 AM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski.
Here, a moment of silence, uh, we, uh, must need to, uh, express our condolences to your family. Your youth was one fantastic guy. People don't know what a sweet baseball player he was. He was a heck of a assistant coach in nine-year-old boys' baseball, too, with his son and my son played on the same team. He was a great guy, was a great family, and, uh, he'll be missed much longer than the years he's been here. Michael?
I, I would also like to acknowledge Kitty Felian, who died. She was a force to be reckoned with in Erie, known for her tours of Erie. She wasn't a native of Erie, but she embraced Erie with all her heart.
We deliver, we were delivering Meals on Wheels to her for, for a while. Nice lady. Michael?
Dear Heavenly Father, who come to me today, I'm so grateful that you would allow us this. And we just ask that you be with us, and that you guide our minds and our hearts, that we might be able to... You visited all those who are suffering from, from brewing and, uh, from beer, and then that you come up with them, and that you help them. Keep keeping in order, and stay with us until we find a better, in your name you pray.
Amen. Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. I have two repository presentations today. The first one is for a gentleman that wants to purchase a vacant lot, 29th and Harding. Dear City Council members, I'd be, I've been advised to submit a letter to City Council with an explanation for the purchase of the property, known as part block, Block 8G, index number 196234115. Below is a list of the required questions along with my answers. Is the property vacant? The property has been vacant for many years and has a very old, badly put-together shed made of plywood and boards. There's an eyesore needs to be removed. My intention would be to completely clean up the area, remove the dead brush and trees, and tear down the old shed. The property is in very bad condition. It is overgrown with weeds, vines, and dead trees. It will require a lot of cleaning to make it no longer an eyesore. The property is behind my house, connected to my backyard. I plan to do weekly maintenance that I already do on my house and yard. I will keep it up to date, looking beautiful. If I get this property, it would be part of my backyard, and I would clean it up and always keep it up to code. The second one is Mr. Morrow, seeking to purchase 728 East 7th. My name is William Morrow. I'm writing to purchase the property at 728 East 7th. I have resided at this address next door at 724 for the past 14 years on a land contract, but two years ago I purchased it. That is why I missed the auction. I have been taking care of this property, 728 East 7th, since the house was demolished in 2008. I've been cutting the grass, and the lot is maintained. Recently, I had trees cut, sidewalk paved, ground leveled, seeded, and fertilized. The, the property is vacant since 2008. I would like to extend my property, making a bigger yard for my kids and grandkids. The conditions were terrible. I've improved these conditions 100%, done a lot of the work which I've indicated. I do live next door at 724 East 7th. I have been maintaining it since 2008, and I've put a lot of work into it. Okay, we have ordinances for first reading?
All the comments?
Oh! Forgot about that. Your address, and you have five minutes. Sorry, citizens.
Okay, Cheryl Lipowski?
Yes?
Please state your name and your address, and then your public comment.
Cheryl Lipowski.
Address?
1404 East 33rd. Pardon me? It keeps freezing. The internet keeps freezing, so I can't always hear you. It keeps breaking up.
Okay, we're waiting for you to give your input.
Um, for the, I wanted to do... The one that I, was reviewed last, that meeting? For the lot for last meeting.
So, you're here for a repository sale from last meeting? Is that the understanding?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was reviewed. Uh, the letter was read, and I understand that a vote would be taken today, if I understand... incorrectly. So, um, I registered so I could, you know, just be a part of that and just, um, see how that was going.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bradley Beck?
Yes?
Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. My name is Bradley Beck, and I'm here for Chicks for Erie. We would like to continue to attempt to get the chicken ordinance lifted. I'll be, uh, 1646 Westwood Drive, Erie, Pennsylvania. Any, any other? As I was saying, we'd, we'd like to get the ban on backyard chickens in Erie City lifted. We would like to do that because there is a large amount of people that are interested in having chickens. It is a, currently a victimless crime, but you're making criminals out of people who... Are just trying to raise some animals, which is... Not the... Not a good thing. There are many other cities in Pennsylvania, both larger and smaller, that allow for chickens, and with similar ordinances. Erie City can follow their path. That's, uh, that's what I have.
Thank you. All right, next.
Gabriel Ratter?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Name and address?
Thank you very much. My name is Gabriel Ratter, R-A-T-E-R, and I reside at 1034 West 9th Street, Erie, PA.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, Council, and thank you for allowing us to speak today. I'm also here on behalf of the Chicks for Erie Movement. Um, currently, I'm a program coordinator at the U.S. Committee for Refugees and Immigrants here on 26th Street. But I grew up on a small dairy farm just across the New York border, where raising animals and planting crops was more than just my family's vocational pursuit. It was a way of life for myself, for my parents, for my grandparents, for all of my family. And as a young person, uh, doing chores and getting up early to milk cows wasn't really that romantic. You know, I'm sure as you guys can understand. But as I got older, I started to realize that this extensive exposure to agriculture ingrained in me a passion for growing my own food and being aware of where that comes from. Currently, I work with scores of refugee farmers from across the globe, helping them utilize their own experience and existing knowledge of agriculture to achieve their personal goals, whether that be, uh, economic self-sufficiency, or starting their own food or farm business, or just mitigating some grocery costs. And in working in this position, I was kinda surprised by my naivety. I had been abroad. My mother was an immigrant from Latin America, or is an immigrant from Latin America. I had spent extensive time working with farmers in many different areas of the globe, and I was awed by these refugees' comprehensive understanding of agriculture and just a respect for the land, for their food, and from where it comes from, much more than even myself or many of my friends. And as these populations make up a significant portion of Erie's population, I think it's imperative to consider how an ordinance like this, which I think will be discussed in more detail afterward, uh, affects the ability for many of these individuals who have existed in agriculture, who have that experience and have had it for decades, to grow their own food and, and empower themselves. And empowering the Erie community is really what the impetus of my support for changing this policy is. Because changing this ordinance is not providing anything, you know? As we talk about policies, uh, there are several different styles of policies. This isn't a tax. It's not providing any type of, um, handout for anyone. It's simply allowing other people to empower themselves by growing their own food, something that was critical for myself, my upbringing, uh, and, and my family as a, as a young child, and still is important, I think, for a lot of Americans. And, um, from what I understand, the ability to raise hens for eggs, to be able to grow your own protein, is really what we're talking about. And as I mentioned, these refugees and immigrants, I think, will, it will seriously benefit from a policy like this, but it's not exclusive to them. There are many individuals across Erie that have responded to the Chicks for Erie's, um, surveys that highly suggest that they would benefit from being able to, um, raise chickens or would support a change like this. So, this is not just my own, uh, desires. This is not just something that I think is, uh, going to be helpful for myself or for the communities that I work with, but it also touches on many of the Welcoming America Program goals and some of the City of Erie vision goals, uh, many of them being, or some of them being equitable access, not just to food, which is the goal of the program that I run here, um, increasing food security, increasing food access. Um, that's something that will, I think, produce positive externalities across the food system. That's just one, equitable access, one aspect. Another one is connecting communities. Many of these communities are very tight to begin with, and allowing them to further that connection through raising chickens and, um, and being able to help each other as neighbors, I think is really important. And the last one is economic development, uh, now, not just as, um, a way to hedge their own grocery costs, but to potentially... Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Christ?
It's Krist. Thank you, everybody. Thanks very much for allowing us to speak today. I'm at 5185 Gibson Hill Road in Edinburgh, PA, and I'm here as a supporter, um, of the Chicks for Erie Initiative. I'm going to allow the students to continue to, to talk about this, and also thank Gabriel for his support of this and the Refugee Agricultural Partnership Program. But I want to emphasize that this is a student-run initiative. The students, um, as part of the Sustainable Food Systems Program, which I oversee at Penn State Barren, came up with this initiative. They care about this city, and they care about its residents. And after connecting with a lot of members of the Erie community through, um, community service projects and, and other partnerships, they saw that this was something that they really, um, could help to address. So, I'll let them do more talking about the, the Chicks for Erie Initiative, but thank you again for allowing us to join you today. That's all.
Kaylin Courier?
Hello, I was curious if I could request that Pearl Patterson go before me, just because I think our talks will go in a more logical order, if she's able to, to talk first.
Okay, Pearl Patterson?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Pearl Patterson. I live at 5086 Station Road.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so today I'm going to speak also on the legalization of backyard hens, and I also want to share some background information with you guys on the Chicks for Erie Initiative, um, and how we got to where we are today. Um, and just to clarify, um, we're speaking on Article 729, um, Section 15, Wild and Farm Animals, and specifically to the statement that prohibits hens. So, I'm gonna start out by saying that the Chicks for Erie Initiative was started by two students at Penn State Barren. Um, that was myself and Jesse Johnson, and we wanted to have some chickens on our campus. Uh, but with a little research, we realized that backyard hens are not permitted in the city of Erie. Um, the both of us grew up with chickens in our backyard. Uh, we didn't grow up in the city. But we grew up with the benefits of having chickens in our backyard, and this includes having fresh eggs, um, increased time spent outdoors, um, and in a way, an education in ecology. Um, so we knew that most cities nearby had policies to permit and regulate these animals, and we thought there are good resources to help us figure out how we might be able to do this. And we also believed that having, um, backyard hens might play a role in relieving some food insecurity for some people. We knew that this was not a solution, but maybe a step in a positive direction. Um, so as we all know, there is not a template for trying to change a policy. But when we started, we began with a logo and social media, because we were primarily interested in connecting with the community. And we also began researching how other cities approached this topic. So, we started things in April of 2019, and over that summer, we were able to hold several events that helped us connect with the community in Erie, um, and get a sense of what the community wanted, um, and how we could get that accomplished. So, we've connected with the Food Policy Advisory Council. They've been very helpful with us all along the way, um, connecting us with people, encouraging us. The largest event we held was at the Blues and Jazz Festival, where we actually brought two hens that people could interact with, and we got to hear how people in the community felt about, uh, backyard hens, and we heard a lot of stories of the emotional connections that people have with these animals. We hosted a tabling event at the, the Oasis Market Fall Harvest Festival, where we were actually able to engage with a lot of young kids and hear how they connect with these animals and how they're interested in backyard hens. Um, we've spoken at the First Presbyterian Church of Edinburgh. We've spoken at the First Presbyterian Church of Edinburgh to raise awareness. And we've hosted several events at the Sisters of St. Joseph Farmers Market, all in an effort to connect with the community. And overall, we found that there was an enormous amount of effort, an enormous amount of support among community members for backyard hens to be legalized, depending on the presence of policies to regulate them. But at this point, we knew we needed more than just anecdotal evidence. And so I'll pass things over to Kaylin to update you guys on what we've got going on currently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Kaylin Courier. I live at 7640 Page Road in Wattsburg. So just to pick up right where Pearl left off, I am an environmental science student at Barron, who's been working on this since the beginning of the academic year. And I kind of picked up the torch where Pearl left it, just to get things going again. And we started off by having some conversations with a lot of organizations within the city. Some examples include Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, the Bayfront Eastside Task Force, Serve Erie, Erie Neighborhood Growth Partnership, and the Food and Policy Advisory Council. So we went through and had conversations and presentations with these organizations because we really wanted to canvas the community, to be able to address the need. You know, we didn't want this to just be a school project that we get a grade on and we sit down, because we think that there is a lot of great opportunity with a change in ordinance to allow hens to be in the city limits for the purpose of eggs. So when we went out and talked to these organizations, we got a lot of good feedback. Almost all was positive. And then if we did receive negative feedback, there were a lot of general misconceptions, which we could easily rest assured, such as noise, roosters, smell, things like that, that we can acknowledge. But we also have some ideas on how to negate those issues. So to continue getting responses from the community, we created a poll. And we received almost 350 responses as of today. 299 were from city residents, and we had a 97% response rate that Erie residents should be permitted to own hens. So there is certainly a lot of support within the city for residents who think that this should be changed. And then we also have a few letters of support from Erie organizations that we can provide to council to prove that there is support and that can be proved. And then most recently, we've also been working with Councilwoman Liz Allen, Kathy Schaff, and Councilwoman David Brennan on this initiative to help us guide the best change of ordinance. Because like Pearl said, there's no guidelines on the best way to change ordinances, but we're trying to get as much input as we can so that we are able to positively affect as many people as we can. So you might be wondering, why do all this work? Some of the criticism we get is, well, like, people might do it anyway. Why does it matter? It's a small thing that we don't want to pay attention to. But we're putting in this work because we believe that raising hens within the city is worth it. There's a few really positive benefits, such as chickens actually help to fight Lyme's disease. They eat ticks and other pesky bugs within the yards of people who own them. And we also really want to be able to protect people who might already have chickens or encourage other people to have them. And this initiative was started, at least I joined it, in the sustainability class. So I believe that there's a huge sustainability aspect to this issue as well. So hens provide a sustainable source of food via their eggs, which in turn helps fight food insecurity. So I'm sure, as you know, there is 10 USDA-recognized food deserts within the city. So having hens and being able to have access to clean, fresh eggs just a few steps out your back door would be amazing opportunity for people who live in this city. And I just kind of wanted to finish off with a quote that Carrie Sashi included in her letter of support, which I think really hits home on this point. She said, "It is more realistic to approach a problem as entrenched as limited food access with the assumption that it will require many small solutions, building upon one another over time. And I think that the change of ordinance to allow hen keeping within the city would be a great small solution to help work to fight food insecurity." Thank you.
Thank you.
Freda Tepper? It seems Freda has two lines. Hold on. Yeah, she might have called in.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Freda Tepper, 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie, 16502. I'm not calling to talk about chickens. But if people want to have chickens, I don't have a problem with it. I see on the agenda are two bikeway contracts, one for French Street and one for Green Garden. It's very important that if there are any protected bike lanes as opposed to just bikeways in the city, that they be designed in such a way that they don't impair the ability of people who are blind and visually impaired to cross streets safely. The people who are blind and visually impaired use the sound of traffic to know when it's safe to cross. And protected bike lanes separate them even further from parallel traffic and makes it harder. And along with that, I'll mention there is something else in the agenda, a contract related to traffic signals. And I do appreciate all the efforts of traffic engineering. However, it's important that whenever new traffic signals are installed or existing intersections are redone, that accessible pedestrian signals should be added. Those make it easier for people who are blind and visually impaired to cross streets safely. I'm also concerned about any contracts and the ongoing contract for curb ramp installation in the city of Erie. I still see, and have seen it on my own corner, that contractors are just putting up plastic flagging. They're not putting up barriers that are cane detectable as required by the city. These contracts should be advertised and awarded and administered in a way that ensures that there is correct marking of the corners when they are torn up. And when there's, it's been almost a month now that mine has an improper barrier and is still not walkable. So it's important that contracting and permitting take care of this. And one last thing, I'm glad that the people of the neighborhood or whoever are getting to use a pickleball court that is going to be put up in Baldwin Park. But it's also important that we have four benches that are in very bad condition. Maybe some of this $200,000 could go towards replacing these benches at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving right along, Lori.
This again. Okay, ordinance for final passage, Council File Number 16220, Official Ordinance 25/2021, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $2,299 of Program Income Generated Through the Home Program for the Following Home Projects. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, that Council File Ordinance Number 16220, and now known as Official File Ordinance 25/2021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 25/2021 by yays, nays, zeros. Council File Number 16221, Official File Ordinance 26/2021, Appropriating the Sum of $8,818.72 of Program Income Generated Through the Community Development Block Grant For the Following CDBG CD19 Projects. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, that Council File Number 26/2021 be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 26/2021 by yays, nays, zeros.
Me, then?
No.
No, I'm against that.
Motion to Table Number Three.
Mr. Chairman, I'm having trouble hearing Michael. I don't know if he's muted or what.
Motion to Table Number Three.
Second.
Is there going to be any discussion on the motion to table? I mean, I think we owe the public an explanation of why there's a motion to table. I don't have anything to discuss. I'm voting against it, but...
With a motion to table, typically there is no discussion. It goes right to a vote, because you're pulling it temporarily from the agenda. If you're going to vote on it, then you would discuss it.
I vote against the table.
Motion by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, Table Official File Order 27/2021. Ms. Allen?
No. Lori, we can't hear you for some reason.
The Council File Number 60222, Official File Order 27/2021.
Still can't hear you.
Wrong one, 2022. Yo, it's the date.
It's a little bit better.
Like an echo or something going on, too. It sounded a little bit better, Lori. Want to do another test real quick, say something?
Can you hear me now?
That sounds better.
They said yes. Can't tell who can hear.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, to table Council File Number 16222, Official Ordinance Number 27/2021. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaff?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion to table... No, we have two ayes and five nays, so we are not tabling.
Correct. The motion to table has failed, so it will remain on the agenda to be voted on by council.
Council File Number 16222, Official File Ordinance 27/2021, An Ordinance With the 2021 City of Erie Budget, The Sum of $400,000 Is Appropriated From Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue. This Amount Will Be Used By the City of Erie Capital Fund For Expenses Related To the City Hall Security Project. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Schaff, The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16222, And Now Known As Official File Ordinance 27/2021, Be Finally Passed By City Council. Is there going to be a discussion before the vote?
The discussion I have against, I am voting no on this, not because I'm against security, but we have one job as council people, that's to watch the money. And I'm not doing that.
Okay. Voting on the ordinance, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys?
No.
Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Winarski? Mr. Witherspoon? You've got to know. City Council Pass-
I vote? No.
City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 27/2021 by yays, ayes, two. Council File Number 16223, Official Ordinance 28/21, An Ordinance In accordance With the 2021 City of Erie Budget, The Sum of $265,000 Appropriated From Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue. This Amount Will Be Used By the City of Erie Capital Fund For Expenses Related To the City Hall Security Project. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Schaff, The Council File Ordinance Number 16223, And Now Known As Official File Ordinance 28/2021, Be Finally Passed By City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys?
No.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski?
No. Mr. Brennan's wrong, you're on line here. Is there a reason why there's only just one ordinance for six? Whatever one, six, two, five, why do they do separate ordinance?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brzezinski, I could not hear you.
No, I was just asking why that had to be divided to 465, when we don't know where the money's coming from. Just wondering why it wasn't one ordinance?
I can't answer that. I think conceivably, you could blend those into one ordinance. There's nothing that would prohibit it from being separate. I think they were just brought separately. I can't answer as to why they're separate. They certainly could be joined as to one ordinance, but in this case, they were not presented that way.
I gather.
I have different budget amounts for ordinance 27/2021. We have capital improvement projects and capital fund balance, two different accounts. And on this 28/2021, the capital asset expense for 265 and the general obligation bond fund balance. So it's the same, it's two different accounts for both ordinances.
Thank you.
Believe that, appropriate the accounts, and then the money has to come from certain budget accounts. Any other discussion? Okay, Council Pass Official File Ordinance 28/2021 by yays, ayes, two. There are no ordinances for first reading, so this takes us to new business.
Reeder?
Vote to move the balance of the agenda?
Vote to move the balance of the agenda? Can I have a second? Mr. Keys, second?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Keys, second?
Any separation?
Any separation?
Any separations? We have a motion by Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Keys, to move the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes, seven nays, zero, seven yays, zero nays. So this takes a committee report.
Yeah, we said that. Committee reports, Mr. Keys reminded me that according to the rules, that we have a five-minute limit for each council person giving their committee reports. So I adhere to that. So, Mr. Witherspoon?
No report, sir.
Very well said, sir. Thank you. Mr. Winarsky, you're muted, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did attend the Port Authority meeting last week. Nothing major to report on there, other there is a slight delay in their expansion with the projects they're doing down there. There's no final decision yet on the eighth grade Tuesdays. They're still playing it by ear a little bit to see how this COVID works out. Did talk to Mr. Zest the other day, and I guess we actually had some compost sales. So I know that's been a topic of maybe getting additional revenues to help the city, and we actually had some compost sales. So hopefully that will thrive more and we'll get, I'll get more information on how much it can possibly bring in. Ms. Schoff and I are going to meet with the police chief after today's meeting as liaison. Just want to go over a few things that have been brought to our attention as council people, different issues or possible complaints, but we will update council when we get some of those answers. I did get to enjoy Erie entity this past weekend, Lynwood Golf Course. The place was absolutely beautiful on Sunday, but we actually had to wait a half hour, so they were very busy. All the carts were out. It was a beautiful day for golf, and it was nice to see once again that maybe the city's making a few dollars that way. But that's all I have for this morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Two minutes. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Fire Chief Joe Waco. He's in today, listening to us. Yesterday was International Fire Day, and I want to thank all of our firefighters. I am so proud to be your liaison. We have good communication and rapport and firefighters, men and women in the city of Erie, Pennsylvania, giving themselves every day on the line. So thank you so much. I attended the EMTA, and they are expected to get money as well for services because of the COVID relief packages. So they will keep us updated. I attended the St. Anne's Neighborhood Watch. A huge thank you to Father Jerry and all he does in commitment to our city and that neighborhood. They consistently show up. There's a good number of them that do so, and I am thankful for all he does. This is Teachers Week, and thank you to all the teachers. But the very first teachers are parents. Parents are the very first teachers. So please encourage your children to have good values, especially when it comes to being civic-minded and cleaning up after yourselves. I still hate to see all the cards that the gas stations have littered all over the place because people can't throw their gas card into the proper disposal. It's going to be Nurses Week, it's Pacific Asian Month. Liz, I'm sure you'll mention that, so I'll let you comment on that because that was the new business. Thank you so much. Thank you to the tree planters. I've noticed trees being planted at Deal School and Connell School and areas. And I'm thankful for Sarah Peelman and Mr. Banco and all the other people who are planting trees. And the United States Postal Service is hiring. I drove by and they have a hiring sign. And Holman Chevrolet is looking for a technician. If you notice, almost every place in the city of Erie is hiring. So those people who want a purpose in life, promote for their families and themselves, there's lots of places hiring out there. And I also want to thank our council people that hopefully will be hearing from Susan Hockenberry on how we can meet with her. So I'm hoping that's in the works. And David Schumacher, who has many years of service with Parks and Recreation, is doing a great job with our park system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schoff. By the way, Mr. Schuys is retiring. Moving right along, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report from Erie Parking Authority. We have a meeting coming up, and I'll report on those activities coming soon. For the Historic Preservation Task Force, we had a meet and greet with Historic Review Commission to talk about the recommendations and kind of pass the torch on to continue with the newly appointed Historic Review Commission. Members of both groups introduced themselves and kind of just kind of gave the background of why they're here and why they support these initiatives to help our city. Agenda included, of course, talking about the recommendations, talking about priorities. And also, the first meeting is for the HRC is planned for June seventh at 4:00 PM. Location to be determined still, given pandemic. We'll see when City Hall opens up to see if we actually meet in room 500 or wherever. It's going to be open to the public, and our first task will be creating a work plan for the first year of the commission. Upcoming events, I know all the council members were informed of the EMI Property Purchase Press Conference. That's Thursday tomorrow, May sixth at 2:30. That's the block-long warehouse built in 1920. They're going to secure, they've already secured the property, and they'll demolish it and prepare for future development. So I'll be attending that. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Allen?
Yes, I attended the New American Council meeting with, led by Neken. And you always learn something new by interacting with immigrants and new Americans. One of the things that was pointed out is that, you know, we don't say English is a second language anymore because a lot of immigrants and refugees actually speak more than one language when they come here. They just have to learn English. At that meeting, we heard from the interim president of Erie County Community College, Dr. Judith Gay, and that college is, really has so much potential to really help keep moving Erie, Erie moving forward. I want to thank Kathy for pointing out that we adopted the resolution on Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This was a, we did a really good collaboration because I worked with Carl Anderson, and Erie County Council adopted a similar resolution last night, and the mayor will be issuing a proclamation at the press conference tomorrow. I wanted to suggest that people check out the Jefferson Educational Society's Digital Summit, which will go on for three weeks. It starts on Monday. On Tuesday, the speaker will be Ali Zady, who's a General McLean graduate and an advisor to President Biden on climate policy. He moved to Edinburgh, where his father worked, from Pakistan when he was a little kid. So I think it just reinforces the great contribution that immigrants make to this country. I want to thank Evan Torres for his patience on the honorary street naming. He's the one who first asked me and maybe wants to pursue, how do we do street namings? We get a lot of requests on how to honor people who have made contributions to our Erie history. Streets are just one way. We've all received, I think, another email from Rob Britton about the black-owned funeral home that was on Peach Street, so we can talk some more about how to do that. Thank the chicks for Erie. They did a great presentation. I think we can really learn from them about how to be advocates for something. They've done a lot of homework, and they've given us a lot of material to look at. Thank, Kathy mentioned firefighters. Thank you, Darren Hart, for a really good informative op-ed to let people know why we tightened those regulations on open burning. I went to the Recycling Electronic Event on Saturday. Huge long lines went past kind of the spoons courts on the way, but everything went smoothly. The way that was handled was amazing. And I just want to, we talked a lot about safety and security, and I think it would be maybe good if, you know, part of that is Governor Wolf has said that the mask mandate will be lifted when we reach seventy percent vaccination rate in Pennsylvania. And maybe it would be a good idea for council members to join together. I'm vaccinated, fully vaccinated. I know Kathy Schoff is a number of other people. Maybe we could help be advocates to help get people vaccinated because the restrictions are going to be lifted. We can get the mask mandate lifted when we hit that seventy percent mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. And Mr. President Keys?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I attended the Airport Authority meeting. Flying is coming back. They're still unfavorable a little ways, but they're they're starting to gain ground, and people are starting to fly again, so that's great. I haven't had a chance to look at it personally, but I see they put improvements at the McClellan Park, and I have that on my list of things to do, go out and check the improvements in the park. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keys. Ms. Stankiewicz, you have anything for the good of the order? Reese, you still there?
I am. I don't have anything this week for council.
Okay, thank you. How about, Mr. Betza?
I don't have anything additional today.
Beautiful. Moving right along. I know we saved the best for last, so Renee, did I get him? Paul, we already talked to you. Say hello, Paul. Are you still there? He left us. All right, Renee, you're on stage.
Good morning, everyone. I have several things to fill you in on. Of course, May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's also Jewish American Heritage Month, Small Business Month, and Preservation Month. And the week of May ninth is National Police Week. Councilwoman Schoff mentioned the International Firefighters Day yesterday. Several of our firefighters and the mayor were on the Rachel Ray Show. They were recording for an episode that will air May fourteenth, so tune in for that. It was part of a grant that we received for our Erie firefighters from the Leary Foundation. In case you missed it, there was also a memorial last week for Willie Blakely, who was our first African-American firefighter who died in the line of duty. And so he was finally honored after nearly forty years. His son Scooter, who takes photos for the Erie Fire Department, received the medal in honor of his father. And if you did miss it, that's on our social media. You can catch it there. Also, we have the bandwagon project is underway. Our two-city bandwagons are being painted by community muralist Antonio Howard. We had a press conference on, I think it was Saturday, the twenty-fourth. And it's a very exciting project. We want to thank EMTA for providing the space so that he can paint those away from the elements. And when those are done, we'll have an unveiling. The KIVA program that we started back in December, so far we've awarded five entrepreneurs with loans. Two new entrepreneurs were awarded on, were fully funded on Monday. One was our own Footlights Theater, which is expanding into its own space. And the other was Enrique's Taqueria and Tortillera, which is hoping to open soon. We have another entrepreneur in the private fundraising stage right now. Once he accumulates enough lenders, then he will move into public fundraising, my guess is, before the end of the week. So keep an eye out on social media for that. That's a very exciting program. Tomorrow's press conference will be announcing the availability of fair funding for residents who need to do, who income qualify and need to make improvements on their homes. They can receive up to three thousand dollars to do renovations. And that was through a grant that we received through PHFA. So we'll be sharing more information on that tomorrow, as well as our home program in which residents can receive funding for first-time homebuyer and also for home renovations. Also, we're going to be starting the neighborhood planning process for the East Side Grassroots Coalition and the Fairmont McClellan Neighborhood. Their first meeting is May thirteenth at 6:30. People, it's a hybrid meeting. People can attend the Quality of Life Learning Center in person, or they can join via Zoom, and the link will be available at cityof.eerie.pA.us/egcmeeting. That's Erie Grassroots Coalition Meeting, EGC. Compost is available starting tomorrow at Gray Bender and Hagerty Park. It will be available every Thursday, and then on Fridays at Walzac, Roger Young, and Wallace Street Park. That's the free compost for residents. And for the first time this year, it's been certified by the Penn State College of Agricultural Sciences. So it's very exciting. Our Public Works Department has been working hard on doing that. I want to remind everybody about the study session tomorrow night with PennDOT on the Bayfront Parkway Central Corridor Project Update. I believe we're doing that at 5:30? I think that's 5:30. And then finally, on May tenth, on Monday, we're having a special conference, press conference. We have so many topics for next week, being Police Week, that on Monday, we will be announcing our flagship fund recipients. We have fourteen. We'll be thanking the Historic Preservation Task Force for all their hard work and introducing the Historic Review Commission that the mayor and council jointly appointed, both of those. And then also announcing some exciting new developments that are underway. And I just want to wish all the moms out there a Happy Mother's Day. That's all for me.
Thank you, Renee.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I forgot to say something very important. May I say something, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So number three on our agenda talks about all the money coming in for people who are having a problem with housing and the homeless. We just can't give out money. There's rules and regulations that are put in place, and they're very strict. We are audited with that. But there are people out there who are homeless who don't know what to do. Please make sure you use the 211, that's the United Way, and the 814 shelter. We need to know who you are. So if you're out there, we don't know you're out there. That's a problem. So please use the help... So, please use the helping systems that are out there. I have a long list of helping agencies, but it's not going to do you any good if you don't use them. Two-one-one, eight-one-four shelter, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, Mr. Keys, go ahead.
That's, you know, uh, great, and, uh, I'd like to have homelessness wiped out in Erie with the influx of, uh, all the additional money. But, uh, are there cards available with this information on it that we can, you know, make it an easy seamless way to, uh, pass it along to a person who may be, uh, experiencing homelessness?
Kathy, do we know that?
I can talk to Deb Smith. Our coordinator of those services.
Good point, uh, I guess it comes back to me here again, first of all, Mr. Brennan, I love the background of your picture here, what is that?
Uh, Frank had, Frank had sent those through, he, he was the genius to put that together, I'm not, not sure who the talented, uh, photographer was, but it's, they're, they're great photos.
Looked very good, definitely, uh, Renee, thank you, you did my job for the, uh, PennDOT study session tomorrow night, Mr. Keys will be running that, he's the liaison to that place. Uh, you did forget to tell him about the Airbnb public hearing at our next meeting, and the most important thing. Can anybody see that? The little tigers start their season tonight, sea wolves are alive and well, so play ball, I think that's all we have.
And, and they started last night, they won twelve to four on the road.
Twelve to four on the road.
Yes, and they, home opener is Tuesday, May eleventh.
I know that too, thank you very much. Those little tigers. Anyway, anything else for the good of the order, if not, we can say goodnight. Have a wonderful weekend, all you mothers out there, congratulations, you did all the work, now you can get the pay hopefully on Sunday. Say goodnight.
City council adjourns at ten eleven A M.
Record.